We would now call it a March 5th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. We are going to have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
May I read the motion?
Are you gonna read it?
At this time, the appropriate motion would be to move that this public body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, sub-paragraphs 1, 2, and 12, Revised Statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel pending litigation, real estate, and contract negotiations, that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and this body will return to open session at 6:00 PM.
So moved again.
Okay, second.
Second and again. Okay, roll call again.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session in the executive conference room. Okay. You can have your book back. We will now resume the May 7th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council meeting. And next item is the consent agenda. Councilman Levisay asks that we pull Item D. Oh, that's right, we didn't do that before. I thought we did it before. Thank you. Let us stand and observe a moment of silence, and then we'll all lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Kinda got confused by doing that early.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seen it? Now, we'll go to the consent agenda after we welcome you here to tonight's City Council meeting. Councilman Levisay asks that we pull Item D, and we will pull that and accept a motion to approve the other items. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Levisay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item D is a 99-year lease for Prairie Township Fire, and I've asked this to be pulled because I've opposed this course of action from the very beginning, largely because this process here is not what I heard those residents on the south side of town say when we started this process a few years ago. What I heard them say is that the goal should be that we have a single emergency services for all of the residents of Blue Springs, and that they deserved access to the same quality fire protection that the rest of the city has. And I don't think anybody's ever said that the firemen and the paramedics that work for Prairie Township are in any way less superior, just simply that Prairie Township does not have the adequate resources to provide the services that our residents expect and that we should be seeking to provide for the residents of Blue Springs. And I think what this is doing is simply just putting a Band-Aid on a problem that's only gonna get worse, because that's where the majority of our growth is happening. And instead, we're doing the same thing that they did 30 years ago, this is the members of this council, by just compromising and letting this go further down. I fully expect with the way this is going, we're gonna be dealing with this issue in another 30 years. And we're letting those residents down by taking this course of action. The residents I talked to down south say this course of action is not what they want. And if there's any other proof that we needed, essentially what's on the agenda tonight was the same thing that got put before the voters last month, and they voted it down. And so I think we need to be doing the hard work and actually solving this problem rather than just compromising and putting ourselves in another unwinnable position. So I think it's important enough, I'm gonna make the motion that we table this until we can have some further discussion to address the issues and actually help the people who are asking for our help down there. So I'll make the motion that we table this until further discussion.
Is there a second for his table?
I would second it.
Well, we'll go straight to a vote.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye to tabling.
Yes. A yes is a table, a no is not too.
Councilman Fowler.
No.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
No.
Councilman Culpepper.
No.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
No.
Carried with a vote of four to three.
Motion failed. Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes.
May I make a statement on this? I've been working on this project, I don't even know how many years. When I speak to the residents, and that happens to be in my district, yes, they would like to be in a different fire district. Is it possible? No. We have been sued, we have had arguments, we have cajoled, we've done everything we possibly could think to do to change the boundaries of the fire district. The law does not allow us to do it. We don't have the power to do it. The fire districts don't have the power to do it. The only way we can get this done is if the consolidation with a different fire district takes place and absorbs all of Prairie. That's not happening right now. There are other avenues, we're working on other things to try to get some resolution to this. But the long and short is, if we go ahead and we have that property, a fire station built on that property, at least the people who live in my district north of Coburn Road will have an ambulance that's closer and won't have to wait 17 minutes for an ambulance to get to them when they're laying on the driveway having a heart attack. No, is it perfect? I agree, it's not perfect, but I think it's a step in the right direction, so I am certainly supportive of having this go.
Any other discussion? Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I guess relative to, we're actually doing a long-term lease, very long-term, for virtually no money, to the fire district down south. And I guess that's consistent with how the city is, because we just gave up a 40-year-old centennial poolplex to the school district within the past month. We've also provided long-term leases to the school district. We help out our fellow taxing districts quite frequently, has been my experience. Also, I guess, when you say this got voted down, I would say that if you look at the voting records of the people that live in Blue Springs, it passed by a large margin that they want help with their fire district and a proposal to have a fire station next to their location. What voted this down was non-residents of Blue Springs who did not want to be part of that plan. So I think I'm, myself, I'm comfortable with providing this land for use for a fire station to Prairie Township. Yeah, I'd like to see them become healthier than they are right now. And they, honestly, there were some efforts with the City of Lake Lot, with the Lotawanna Fire District and them to consolidate. I thought it was a good plan, but it didn't work out.
And I'd like to remind everyone that what got voted down by the non-Blue Springs residents was a consolidation with Lotawanna, had nothing to do with any other fire district. It didn't involve CJC or any other surrounding fire district. It was between Lotawanna and Prairie.
Your Honor, do we know if Prairie is ready to pull the trigger on putting a fire station on that property?
You want to go first?
They have to do, they have to pull the trigger, and they have the reserves to do it. They have the power to bring in the money necessary to build that station.
I guess the only thing that I would add is this is part of a mediated agreement to dismiss a lawsuit that the City of Blue Springs has hanging over our heads right now.
Yeah, that's absolutely right, Your Honor. And I would disagree with what Councilman Culpepper says. I think there's at least two courses of action that we could attempt here, but we're in this position because we've, instead of trying to fight that lawsuit, we have mediated that lawsuit. We chose not to try to fight on this issue, and we're putting ourselves in this position because of it. So you're absolutely right, we're doing this because of mediation, but I don't think we should've ever gone to mediation. I think there are some courses of action we could take if we were willing to do it, and just for whatever reason, we don't have the support to. So that's my position.
Well, I would invite Councilman Levisay to meet with me, because we have exhausted, we've had attorneys, we've had all kinds of people looking at this. So I would love to meet with you to see what you think can be done, because right now the laws don't allow us.
Good discussion. Now we need a, we've already had a motion and a second, right? Did we have that already, and then?
That might've just been the table.
No, you just pulled it, and we were discussing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Both same sign.
No.
Motion carries. Now, we're gonna go into a public hearing to vacation of landscape easement.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Council information form with attachments, planning commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 7, 2018, 185-foot foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4566 approving the plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Motion. No, Matt?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request to vacate all areas designated as a landscape easement on the final plat for Colonial Gardens First Plat. It has become common practice to delineate and dedicate landscape easements on final plats to further define the required landscape buffers. However, after additional review of the UDC, staff has determined that a landscape easement is only required along street frontages where a limits of no access is required. A limits of no access was not required along southeast Wyatt Road, and therefore, landscape easement is not necessary. 2015 UDC also added flexibility to landscape buffers with, in terms of widths and design. A minimum 15-foot wide buffer is required along southeast Wyatt Road, and a 25-foot terrace frontage design was selected with the approved 2016 Site Plan Design Review for Colonial Gardens. Details of landscape buffers are reviewed and approved through the Site Plan Design Review process and not the plating process, and therefore, staff does support the vacation request, and moving forward will be limiting easement locations and dedications on plats for landscape easements. The primary reason for the request to vacate this landscape easement is driven by a PD Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review that was approved by the Planning Commission on April 23rd, which permitted a portion of the existing Lath House to remain in place as a legal non-conforming structure on the frontage along Wyatt Road. Both the Planning Commission and staff recommended approval of the vacation with two conditions in the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
Your Honor, I would just like to make a statement.
Yes.
I have occasion, well, I've been out there quite a few times lately, and I also have been out to Wine Wednesday, which is a lot of fun. Mr. Swope has done a magnificent job out there, and we really do have a wonderful destination in our south part of our city. So I just want to go on the record saying thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, Matt. We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4566, an ordinance vacating all landscape easements as part of Lot 1 Colonial Gardens First Plat, located at 27610 Southeast Wyatt Road in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. Both same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4566, an ordinance vacating all landscape easements as part of Lot 1 Colonial Gardens First Plat, located at 27610 Southeast Wyatt Road in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4736.
We have another public hearing on a vacation of a 20-inch bill line and portion of drainage and utility easement.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form with attachments, planning commission staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 7, 2018, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4567 approving the vacation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
All this vacation is making me daydream of white sand. Matt, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request to vacate a portion of a platted drainage and utility easement and 20-foot build line along the Walnut Street frontage on lots 10 through 14 in Hannah's Place Second Plat. Dwelings by Design KC is currently developing the second plat of Hannah's Place and has been faced with the challenge of accommodating their standard building footprint depths and driveway lengths due to the 20-foot setback and easement. Having a minimum 20-foot building line limits the rear driveway lengths to generally less than 18 feet, which cannot comfortably accommodate extended cab vehicles, which presents an issue in keeping the shared access drive clean, or clear. Although the Downtown Development Code only requires a 10-foot front yard setback, a 20-foot front setback was established since a 20-foot drainage and utility easement were platted. At the time, a plating drainage infrastructure was intended to be located within that 20-foot easement, however, the drainage infrastructure was ultimately constructed in the easement at the rear of the lots with the shared access drive. Vacating the north half of this 20-foot easement along southwest Walnut Street and the build line will allow the homes to be shifted closer to the street, which will still meet setbacks and accommodate the desired driveway lengths. The proposed vacation will not impact any adjacent properties. Staff has received letters from all public utility companies indicating that they do not have any utilities within the portion of the easement requested to be vacated. During the Planning Commission public hearing on April 23rd, one resident did speak in opposition to the request and cited concerns regarding ongoing construction and damage to her property. The Downtown Review Board recommended approval of the vacation request at their April 10th meeting, and the Planning Commission and staff also recommend approval of the vacation subject to the two conditions in the staff report. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Matt? Seeing none, thank you. We'll go to the public. Anybody in support of? Speaking in support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4567, an ordinance vacating the northern 10 feet of a 20-foot utility and drainage easement and the 20-foot building line on the southwest Walnut Street frontage of Hannah's Place Second Plat, lots 10 through 14, located at the northeast corner of southwest 9th Street and southwest Walnut Street in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4567, an ordinance vacating the northern 10 feet of a 20-foot utility and drainage easement and a 20-foot building line on the southwest Walnut Street frontage of Hannah's Place Second Plat, lots 10 through 14, located at the northeast corner of southwest 9th Street and southwest Walnut Street in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4737.
Next, we have the introduction ring of Bill 4568, which is a bill that was brought about by a gentleman coming here a couple of council meetings ago. So who would like to introduce it?
I'd like to introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4568, an ordinance repealing Section 500.140, storage of flammable liquids of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. Both same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4568, an ordinance repealing Section 500.140, storage of flammable liquids of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4738.
Now, we're back to public hearings again. Public hearings, amendments to Section 405-060.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form with attachments, planning commission staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 7, 2018, applications with attachments of Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4569 approving the amendments. This is all we have to offer for the record.
All right, Mike, you're up this time.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Unified Development Code to the storage of above-ground flammable liquids. This is done in conjunction with the previous ordinance, which repealed the sections in Title V, Section 500 of the Code of Ordinances. And a little bit of history, back in 1994, ordinance 2500 was adopted, which contained a prohibition for the above-ground storage of flammable liquids defined as Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3A liquids as defined by the International Fire Code. That same ordinance also put into effect temporary or exemptions, which allowed above-ground storage tanks on a temporary basis not to exceed 90 days and in where there was property zoned and/or used for industrial, high industrial types of land uses and/or construction sites. Recently, there's been a desire in the city to respond to the changing needs of businesses as they operate in the city and to release those restrictions and prohibitions on the above-ground storage of flammable liquids. As such, staff did some research on neighboring communities, Independence and Lee Summit, to see what their regulations were, and have proposed some Unified Development Code regulations to allow the above-ground storage of flammable liquids on both a permanent and temporary basis and to provide regulations for those. As proposed, section, pardon me, kind of in a nutshell, what we have done is we've created a new accessory use to which these above-ground storage tanks would fall under. It's proposed as a non-residential accessory use, and that means it can only be accessory to a principal use on a property. And these ordinance, or the amendment as written, would only allow it to be the above-ground storage of fuel tanks, to be accessory to uses that are listed under the industrial use classification, the agriculture limited use, and the building contractor and construction contractors use. So it's, we are, though we have removed the prohibition, we are allowing these as accessory to principal uses in a limited format for those uses that we, in talking with the gentleman that spoke before you, the uses that he had asked for, as well as other cities and where those are used throughout the city and in situations in which those are desired. As a new non-residential accessory use, if the principal use on the property ceases to exist and is vacant for a period of 12 months, then the new, or then the accessory use of those tanks would have to be removed as well. So any time that the principal use ceases to exist, then the accessory use must cease as well, and in this case, the above-ground storage tanks must be removed if the principal use ceases to exist. The above-ground, the tanks themselves, the development regulations that you may be familiar with, such as setbacks and building separation, the ordinance, the proposed amendments in the ordinance seek to use the International Fire Codes that contain separation and setback regulations within them. Staff has reviewed those and met with our building staff, as well as the fire, Central Jackson County Fire Protection District, to coordinate those and how those will be put into effect. And those are the regulations for the permanent tanks. In addition, as part of our review, we took this forward, or we took this to the Development Advisory Commission, and they recommended approval of these UDC amendments, but directed staff to do a little bit more research on the above-ground storage on a temporary basis, feeling that 90 days, which is currently allowed under code, was, or 90 days was not long enough, and that the size regulation, the size maximum of 250 gallons, isn't large enough in today's industry. So staff did some research by the, in between taking it to the Development Advisory Commission and the Planning Commission, called around to a number of people who rent these out, you know, contractors that rent these out, and we did find out that our regulations are a little bit outdated, and that the minimum size that most of these companies rent out is 500 gallons, and so we've proposed in these amendments to increase the temporary storage from 250 gallons up to 500 gallons and increase the 90 days to 180 days. We also have in the, in the proposed UDC amendments, a provision that would allow for a larger tank than 500 gallons, as determined by the Community Development Director, as some sites may be appropriate for larger than 500-gallon tanks, such as large earthwork on a large subdivision. That may be appropriate for a larger-sized tank, but a smaller infill construction site may not be appropriate for a larger tank, given its proximity to other buildings and residences and other things of that nature, so. Finally, as part of the UDC amendments, we have defined what the above-ground tanks for the storage of flammable liquids are, what they consist of, and those are defined as a self-contained above-ground facility or tank structure for the storage of Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3A flammable liquids as defined by the International Fire Code adopted by the city. So we're only talking, those three liquids that I described are gasoline, diesel, and other similar flammable combustible liquids like that. We're not talking about propane tanks. I just wanted to make that clear. So as I mentioned, we did take this to the Development Advisory Commission on April 13th. They recommended approval with that additional staff research, and also to the Planning Commission on April 23rd, and they recommended approval as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mike?
Your Honor, Mr. Mallon, have you got the picture of the 500-gallon tank? I know you had one. I think it's important for people to see that that's not really a very big tank when you look at it. It's not like we're putting a refinery tank out there.
Right, yeah, I can bring one up if you give me just a quick second.
Well, I think it's kind of important, because that is something that people say, "Well, I don't want this great big tank," but they're really not very big. And we were also talking on the increase of the gallons on a temporary tank, not permanent storage.
So this is a, what a 550-gallon tank would look like. So it's roughly six and a half, or six feet by four feet tall. So it's not very large, and a picture of one would be the smaller one to the right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Matt, let's go to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4569, an ordinance amending Section 405.060 accessory uses and Section 411.030 use groups and definitions regarding the above-ground storage of flammable liquids.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4569, an ordinance amending Sections 405.060 accessory uses and Section 411.030 use groups and definitions regarding the above-ground storage of flammable liquids.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.[1735.35]
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given Ordinance Number 4739.
The last public hearing for the evening is the capital improvement program.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form with attachments, PowerPoint presentation, draft of proposed 2018 to 19 to 2022, 23, capital improvements program, public notice as published in the Examiner on Saturday, April 21, 2018, and CIP Review Committee Agenda Packet, and Bill Number 4570 approving capital improvements program. This is all we have to offer for the record.
I'd like you up again.
All right, thank you. It's time once again to review the capital improvement program, this, for the 2018, 2019 to 22 to 2023, five-year capital improvement program window. As per the city charter, the capital improvement program is reviewed every five years, or it looks at a five-year window, but is reviewed annually as part of the annual budget process. The CIP Review Committee met on April 18th to present the draft summary of the capital improvement program. Planning Commission was provided a copy for their review on April 23rd for the CIP, the draft budget. As is consistent with past CIP budgets, this 2018 to 2019 to 22, 2022 to 2023 is consistent with the past CIP budgets, as well as directives provided by City Council. Emphasis throughout the five-year program is on maintenance of existing infrastructure and replacement of mission-critical equipment. Five-year budget overview, including all projects in the plan, is approximately $139 million. As you could, the graph before you shows how that is breaking down over the five-year window, with, between the funded capital improvement needs and the unfunded capital needs. As you can see, there are quite a bit more unfunded needs than there are funded needs. The lion's share of the funded needs, again, are maintenance, at about 89% of the total, which is $45 million for the five-year for the funded, with equipment replacement at almost $2.4 million and capital improvements at $3.2 million. The unfunded capital needs, the next column over, there are, will be, and are anticipated to be, a number of maintenance projects to come on over the next five years as well that are in the unfunded category, and the largest amount in there is the unfunded capital improvement needs, which, again, reflects a maintenance-driven capital improvement project program, and not a lot of funds for the actual capital improvements, facilities and buildings, things of that nature. Projects funded by category by year, next year, fiscal year 2018 to 2019, maintenance, again, accounts for a large portion of the, of the eight point, almost $8.8 million, at $7.8 million, equipment replacement at almost 500, or a little over $500,000, and capital needs, capital improvements at $400,000. As you can see across the five-year window, those numbers generally track and are consistent with their distribution. There are a little bit, some extra capital improvement needs in the fiscal year 2019 to 2020, but other than that, they're all about the same. I believe it was, started just a few years ago, but this is a breakdown of the CIP as it is, projects by the strategic framework goal, as adopted by the City Council, and those goals of public safety, infrastructure, housing, neighborhood preservation, parks and rec, revenue, stability, development and redevelopment, and internal operations and city workforce, both funded and funded, creating the total. Some of the projects, every year, change a little bit, either move from the unfunded category to the funded category, or come off of the CIP program altogether. Within the next five years, these projects were removed from the unfunded list. Duncan Road Trail, that was removed because that money was rolled into another project. The public safety software replacement, PS0618, was listed as unfunded in last year's CIP, but was actually funded in the current year, in the 2017, 2018 budget. So there was money that was found and was able to be put towards that. And then the final one that was removed from the unfunded list is ST32, or the Downtown Gateway Structures. That project was removed and deleted from the program the next five years. There were, every year, the city reaches out to the different departments within staff to get a sense of what kind of projects are needed coming on, line within the next five-year window, and these are the new project sheets that were submitted, a summary of those. A number of them are related to parks and recreation, but these are both funded and funded, and oftentimes the unfunded ones are, even though they're unfunded, we do review those to know what's coming down the road, maybe not this five-year window, but maybe down the road. Public safety, radio project, and AES encryption, and then a number of public works projects. Projects proposed to be funded for the 2018, 2019 capital improvement budget, these are allocated by department, or to help, by percentage, to help see where these, these funds are going on a percentage basis, approximately 35% of the funded projects will be in the parks and recreation, 37% are for streets, 13%, and 11% are for the sanitary sewer utility and the water utility, respectively, and storm sewer, field house, and community development take up a much smaller portion of those. These, these next projects are the ones that are proposed to be funded. Only the funded projects make it into the CIP budget. There are some for community development, field house, such as replacement of fitness cardio equipment, some other parks projects listed here below, total about $3 million. Streets, pavement management program is by far the largest for that category, at almost $2.8 million for a total of almost $3.4 million, and then the stormwater and sanitary sewer utility and water utility needs are listed below for the total of approximately $8.8 Some of the next five-year trends and considerations, want to stress the importance of the parks and maintenance sales tax that was approved last year and implemented last year, in which a number of projects that had previously been unfunded moved to the funded list and are now able to be done, thanks to the parks and maintenance sales tax that was approved. There will be continued gaps in other areas, such as street maintenance and stormwater, or major reconstruction and capacity building. There just are many more needs in the capital improvement program than there are, there are funds available. And the challenge in that is identifying long-term solutions to address the gaps and deferred maintenance that is often happening as part of this budget. The City Council action on the capital improvements program, notice of tonight's hearing was published on Saturday, April 21st, and the City Council may adopt the draft CIP tonight at this May 7th meeting. That is all the presentation I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. We will go to the audience. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of, in support of, opposition two, opposition two. Close the public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4570, an ordinance adopting the City of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2018, 19 through 2022, 23.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion. Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4570, an ordinance adopting the City of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2018, 19 through 2022, 23.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
No.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman, Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with the vote of six to one, given Ordinance Number 4740.
We're going from public hearings to presentations. Next, we have the park sales tax presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we just want to give you a brief update on the sales tax that was passed last April by the voters. If you remember back on April 4th, we had a 70% approval of the sales tax by our residents to basically fund $15 million of park projects over the next five years. It still only addresses, though, about 40% of the parks deferred maintenance needs. As Mike had, had displayed in the CIP, we still have significant areas where funding is not available. We certainly have had other projects or other residents contact us about programs or projects within the park. They were specifically laid out within the sales tax what projects would be funded. Our goal is to continue to fund those projects first. Certainly, as we get towards the end of the sales tax, if either funding or the projects come in under budget, we'll look at other additional projects with the funds that would be made available through the sales tax that we collect over the five-year period. The park sales tax, this is a, just a quick snapshot of kind of how we've laid out the five-year plan that equals $15 million. So this year, we're spending just under $2 million in park projects. That doesn't count any contingency dollars, so that contingency dollars that are shown at the 885 mark, those are allocated throughout the project based upon each project cost. We normally run somewhere around 10% of contingencies, so we, so we ensure those projects are able to be completed with the dollars allocated. And then next year, we're looking at about just under $3 million, and you can see the rest. We certainly are excited about some of the projects that are going on in this year. The projects specifically are Rotary Park, Ward Park Playground, those two playgrounds are under renovation right now. The Blue Springs Park and the Pink Hill Park Tennis Courts, those are currently under renovations. The Addams Point Golf Course bunkers have been completed, and then we do have three trail sections, Bon Gartner Park, the entire trail will either be, sections of it will be replaced and other sections will just be overlaid. Woodschapel Park is actually, the trail is getting totally removed and replaced, and then Duncan Road, there'll be some partial removal and overlay of that park as well, its trail system, or not park, but the trail system there along Duncan Road. And that's east of Adams Ferry Parkway, basically to 23rd Street or the Coles Distribution Plant, so it'll get that whole section of trail that we've got paved in that area renovated. So as we look at those budgets for this year, the playgrounds and stuff, so the 366 includes contingency dollars in that, and you can see that currently to date, we, we have allocated about $1.6 million in projects. Of that, when you look at the projects and what those costs are with the budgets, that would be about $1.73 million. So right now, we're about $123,000 under budget to date, so we continue to work to make sure that we're meeting the needs in those projects within the allocated amounts. So just kind of give you a little bit of history, this is Rotary Park, what it looked like probably three months ago, and we're pleased to say that today, this is what is there. They have completed the playground. The fence was removed today, so it has been open to the public, and these are just some other pictures and some other images to get you an idea of the improvements that have been made at this park and this playground. I can tell you that through this process, it's been very difficult to keep kids off the playground. They're all excited to be on there, and fortunately today, now, they can, they can fully be on this playground. So Ward Park Playground, this is the playground, they're actually, have removed this equipment, and actually, the, the equipment is being delivered tomorrow morning, so they'll start the installation tomorrow, and this is what's going in at that location. So it'll probably be about a four to six-week process for them to, to install it and to put it in, but we certainly look for it to have as dramatic impact as what Rotary Park has at this point in time. And these are just some of the tennis courts, currently, Pink Hill Park's tennis court, it's actually further along than this, they just didn't have any current shots, but this is the post-tensioned concrete. This is actually the, the concrete slab that has now been poured at Blue Springs Park. As that slab cures out, they'll put the tension on it, they'll start putting the fabric on the fencing, and then probably in about another three weeks, they'll start color coding it and striping it and getting it ready to be open to the public as well. So hopefully, by the end of the month, we should have two tenant, two new tennis court facilities, one at, at each of those locations, so. And then just trail renovations, again, Bon Gartner Park, Woodschapel, and Duncan Road. This is just a picture of some of the trails and some of the reasons why we're, we're looking at resurfacing and trying to make them safer for the residents to use. And then as we move into next year, Mike talked a little bit about the projects, but Woodschapel Basketball Court, Ward Park's Basketball Court, and then we've got restroom facilities at Blue Springs Park, some baseball fields, and then some more trail work that's going to be done. But the big project that everybody's been talking about and continues to ask us about is Burris Old Mill Park, and that renovation process is, is literally to renovate the entire park at that location. And the big thing about that that we continue to ask is, is about the splash pad, and that is part of the project here. We've actually just today started meeting with contractors and vendors, as we have that RFP out on the streets right now. It'll take them about a year to plan the project, and then hopefully starting construction this fall, so it'll be open next May by Memorial Day of next year. That's, that's the intended goal for the splash pad and the playground there. And then, of course, some of these other amenities will be addressed as we go through the summer months to make that park kind of look brand-new and bring it back to life. This is kind of the conceptual design, we worked with an architect to show what we're doing with Burris Old Mill Park. So one of the big things right now is that the park kind of deadens, you can go right or left when you enter that park, but unfortunately, you can't go all the way around. We're going to actually make that into a one-way for that park only, so that we can create parallel parking, as well as angled parking, to create more parking spaces to accommodate, hopefully, an influx of people wanting to use that park with the renovations being made and kind of redesign, so we're bringing that basketball court into the center, that splash pad and that playground area gets a little bit bigger and a little bit nicer. So certainly looking at the shelters and some of the other facilities there that'll be renovated as well. And so these are just some potential themes that we talk about. What we're really trying to do is really change the dynamics of the way kids think about play and really wanting them to be excited to get out. So we're looking, you know, possibly at Bugs Life as maybe a playground theme, the Tree of Life Jungle Caribbean-type theme playhouse, Treasure Island Pirate Shipwreck theme, or an Old West theme. So certainly, there's a lot of those themes that are out there, and this is just, somebody had an idea in Maryland, and they took The Wizard of Oz, and they made a themed playground out of that. So that's kind of the dynamics that we're really trying to influx into our park system and really try to serve our residents, but maybe also make this an opportunity to draw some people into our community and see what Blue Springs has to offer. And then this is just a splash pad theme, kind of that pirate Treasure Island theme. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we certainly appreciate your support and time, and hopefully you like what you're seeing here.
I would just like to commend you on the wonderful work you and your department are doing. This is magnificent, and it truly represents where we want to go with our city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Exciting times for sure, and one of the things we talked about when I was liaison to the Parks Commission was taking credit for this, and you're doing that somewhat tonight, but as you make these improvements, are you talking about maybe some signage that says "promise kept," your tax dollars at work?
Currently, right now...
Because this is going to sunset at some point, and we're going to ask for a renewal.
Absolutely, and currently, right now, each of the parks, as we're doing those projects, there are signs up that basically say just specifically that, and then when they're completed, we'll put "completed" over those.
Perfect.
We probably won't leave them up a whole long time, but certainly for a while...
Just to let people know.
Absolutely.
Dennis, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned you're getting some residential requests for additional programming or additional equipment. Is there any sort of theme or consistency with those requests you're getting?
No, I mean, it's, it's more like, are you going to redo the basketball courts at Rotary Park? That's not a project that's in the sales tax at this time. It's one of those projects that needs to be done, but it just didn't make the cut because it wasn't as in deferred maintenance need as, as a high priority as some of the other things that we're doing.
I was just curious.
So that's really what it is. It's, you know, the biggest thing, again, is, you know, even residents that don't even realize we're doing some of this stuff, they're saying, "We'd really like to get a splash pad," and it's great to be able to say, "It's coming next year," and their eyes light up, and they're, they're extremely pleased with that.
Councilman Fowler?
I'm good, Your Honor, but I just want to say thank you as well. Thank you. Very good job.
Thank you.
Just a few questions, though. The new playground equipment going to Rotary Park, Ward Park, all that, what's the life expectancy on those? Because some of that equipment, I swear, has been there since my kids were little, and they're like grown, and I got grandkids, so...
Typically, playground equipment's 15 to 20 years. You should be looking at, at changing it out after that time. Some of the problems that we're having with some of the playground equipment today that you're talking about is that we can't get the parts to replace it. That's why we're at that point of saying, "We're going to have to close this, we can't keep it safe." So that's why a lot of these projects right now are where we're at, and that's why, you know, yeah, it would've been nice to do Old Mill Park right now instead of waiting, but we really needed to address those, those areas where we're going to have to shut them down.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, again, thanks for the presentation. We, first and foremost, we want to thank the voters for approving it, and secondly, the work that you've done and the Park Commission and those people involved, so state of course, and I think we'll have a lot of happy people to see those changes, because they are dated. Okay, we'll move on to Item 14, which is introduction and ring the bill 4571.
First reading of Bill Number 4571, an ordinance amending Chapter 655, hotels, motels, et cetera, adding terms to Section 655.010, definitions and rules of construction, and adding a new Section 655.120 tier classification program to the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second? I guess we had a second almost simultaneous.
one-two-zero, tier classification program, to the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second. I guess we had a second almost simultaneously.
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yeah, any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, I did want to bring this up. I think, thanks to Councilman Kayler, I think he was involved in obtaining some of this language from the city of Branson, and then it went to our Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board for their review. What it is, is there's, this is a hotel and motel where we dive deeper in and regulate them a bit more. And honestly, for the vast majority of our hotels and motels, I don't think they'll see any difference because they're responsible business owners. This is only, I mean, to me, this is coming down to a couple of businesses that have gotten out of hand, and honestly, we didn't have the ordinances on our books to manage what we've seen. And there's a lot of citizen outcry for this, you know, a month or so ago on Facebook, and I think this is a good reaction, thanks to our Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, because they were working on it, had the opportunities for them to ask all their questions and basically do what the legislation does and get it perfected. They voted to move this forward, and they took away some of their own time to review this and to move it forward so the city council could get it this evening, and it does, it should help manage some of those problems that we're starting to see in our town.
Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Councilman Kayler?
I too worked on this for June two thousand and sixteen, wanted to have something to this liking. I do want to recognize Crime Prevention Sergeant, Sergeant, and Officer Heinschmann for all their input and resources that they put into it to make this an adaptable ordinance for us, for the city of Blue Springs, and I think not that it will completely turn everything around, but it is a tool that we can start taking care of some of these problems, and it's good to see this come before the council after two years of trying to put something together.
Very good, thank you.
With the bulk of these businesses in my backyard, I'm very appreciative.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-five seventy-one, an ordinance amending chapter six fifty-five, hotels, motels, et cetera, adding terms to sections six fifty-five dot zero one zero, definitions and rules of construction, and adding a new section six fifty-five dot one-two-zero, tier classification program, to the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-seven forty-two.
Last but not least, introduction and reading of bill forty-five seventy-two.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-five seventy-two, an ordinance amending Title III, Schedule II, Table Two A, speed limits of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, to set the speed limit at thirty-five miles per hour along Northwest Valley View Road from Northwest Woodschapel Road to the west city limit.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second. Discussion. Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-five seventy-two, an ordinance amending Title III, Schedule II, Table Two A, speed limits of the code of ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, to set the speed limit at thirty-five miles per hour along Northwest Valley View Road from Northwest Woodschapel Road to the west city limit.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-seven forty-two.
Okay, we're going to move right to merril announcements, and then on merril announcements, I'm going straight to the thoughts to find out. And I quote, "Never let the fear of striking out keep you from playing the game," end quote. You better have an idea who that is. Babe Brook.
Okay.
All right, we're going straight to visitors. I do have one visitor's appearance forum from James Quint, want to talk about panhandling in Blue Springs. Come on up, come on up to the microphone. I said your name, but you can repeat it.
I'm James Quint, there's my lovely wife, and she's got better people skills than I got, so maybe she ought to come up. I was going to make a comment on this, one thing about the hotels and the ordinance, and gentleman over here said there's a couple of them, you know, they're probably on Jefferson Street, and we probably all know which those two are. I go up to Blue Springs Harley quite a bit, and I'll see the, see the guy, it's about panhandling, by the way, but I see him coming from that one hotel mainly. They carry their little signs, this one guy, he's real good at it, he's got his guitar, and he plays that, and so what I've done the last five years, they're wearing me out because I call non-emergency, my brother's in blue, and I've talked to Charlie Waits, I've talked to some guys about, and I don't have the city ordinance, but you guys know what it is. There's a city ordinance against panhandling in Blue Springs. So when they pick these boys up, I guess they check them for priors or outstanding warrants, they should, because we've got a crime problem on Jefferson Street. We all know that because Neighborhood Watch, if you get on the Facebook, you'll see how many calls the police department's running up there. But every day I see them, and they're a safety feature, you know, I got off of, I didn't call them today because I'm wearing out the dispatchers, I think. I was going eastbound on I-70, and I got off on seven, and here's a guy that looks better shape than me, and he's holding up a sign wanting money. And there's guys with dogs, and it's just, it's a scam, and I go to Kansas City, I don't like going to Kansas City. I've lived here thirty years at Hunter's Dell, across from you. Love the neighborhood, love Blue Springs, but it's not the Blue Springs it used to be. You know, they're stealing a lot of cars, I see that on Facebook, I don't know, but there's a problem over there on Jefferson Street, that's part of it. But if you can help me do something, I think if they'd put up a sign that said, you know, "No Panhandlers Against the Law," said the ordinance something right there, the off-ramp going westbound and eastbound off I-70, they're there every day, so you guys figure it out what you want to do, but it's wearing me out. I'd like to carry a sign and say, "No Panhandlers," and follow them around while they're, you know, got their little dogs and playing their guitars, but that's all I got to say.
All right, I appreciate you coming and bringing that to attention. I don't know what we can do, but certainly, we can look into it. That right-of-way coming off the interstate really belongs to MoDOT.
Well, it's a public safety issue, because people slowing down, they're throwing them dollar bills and stuff, and-
Yeah, we certainly can look at it. I don't know, we'll have our city attorney, I'm dumping more work on her, and between our city attorney and our police department, they'll look and see if there's anything we can do. I don't know if we can-
Yeah, if they could just check their, you know, see if there's any outstanding warrants or, you know, I don't want the bad boys, they're out of Lansing or something, you know.
All right, well, I appreciate you coming, expressing your concerns. Thank you. That's all I have, so is there a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Second? On the favor, aye?